Ladies and gentlemen, for the first time ever in 20 years, no announcement was made for the stated meeting. Congratulations. On that note, 5:00 PM, after 5:00 PM stated meetings, there are no explaining of votes. You have to keep quiet. You will be escorted out of the chambers, believe me. On that note, on that note, ladies and gentlemen, please, at this time, place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good evening and welcome to the stated meeting of July 14th, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak; members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times; insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Aviles.
Present.
Ayala. Banks.
Present.
Botcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz. Felder. Felice.
Here.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Here.
Hanif. Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marmarado.
Present.
Marte. Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Ose.
Present.
Palladino. Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung. Vernikoff. Williams.
Present.
One.
Here.
Juang.
Here.
Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Geshe Nweng Thukje of Sarah J. Buddhist Culture Center, located at 4130 57th Street in Queens.
Yeah, firstly, honorable all here speaker and the member of all council member. I'm great honor and also appreciate and thanks to all of you serving for the here people of New York. That's, I would like to say you, on behalf of Sarah J. Buddhist Culture Center, you all are doing great job and very, how to say, helpful for the people of New York City. This is very, very necessary, especially during this difficulty time, that's what I would say. And then here today, I would, before I started go to prayer, some words. As, as we all, everybody wanted peace and happiness, every sentient beings, and nobody wanted any single suffering. That's the fact or reality. So for that, actually, yeah, today I'm going to here read some few words for paying homage, first to all God, Buddhists, and then especially for good health, happiness, and success and prosperity in, how to say, all over the world, especially in the United States and also in this city. And then also dedication for all which we are doing together, collect our good deeds, right? For dedicate for all those, how to say, well wishes, good wishes for that, yeah. And then, before I finish, I would like to say also, and, on this year, as you all know, His Holiness the Fourteenth Dalai Lama, who is being the, how to say, lover of, lover and practice and promote of peace and compassion throughout all over the world, as you all know for that. So that's why, on this occasion, and Dalai Lama, how to say, now he turned into 90 years, on these years. So people of, of, how to say, peace lover and compassion and all over the world, how to say, celebrating his birthday all over the world, not only the Buddhist community, not only the Tibetan, His Holiness, he love and compassion for every sentient beings. He concern and taking care for every sentient beings. So that's why I hope and wish to, how to say, how to say, to pass this resolution of, on July 6th, as the day of Dalai Lama, as, how to say, in this house, by, as by Julie One and all of your supporters. Thank you very much to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Julie One to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm honored to have Geshe Nweng Thukje from the Sarah J. Buddhist Cultural Center to deliver the invocation. And the resilience in the face of the cultural genocide and occupation is a powerful statement to the human spirit by the Tibetan Buddhist traditions and the preservation of their language and culture. And as a council, we have recognized the community by formally celebrating Losar. And as Geshe Thukje delivered the invocation today, in part in celebration of the Dalai Lama's 90th birthday, which was on July 6th. So thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to thank Geshe Nweng Thukje for being here today, and I make the motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Adoption of minutes?
None.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M155.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-up.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala. Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz. Felder.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif. Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marmarado.
Aye.
Marte. Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moreno.
Aye.
Moya. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Ose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley. Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung. Vernikoff. Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Juang.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye. I vote aye, sorry.
Councilmember Riley votes aye. Thank you.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, evening. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge the death of Yueth Kyuchung, a 76-year-old New Yorker from Sunnyside who died in a fire in Councilmember Ung's district on the 4th of July. The FDNY confirmed that the fire was caused by a lithium ion battery, the first fatality of this year. Though the council has passed several pieces of legislation regulating the sale and use of lithium ion batteries, we knew there is more work to be done to enforce these laws and ensure the safety of all New Yorkers. My heart goes out to her loved ones, her community, and her family as they deal with this incredible loss. I also want to deal and address the devastating consequences of Trump's big, bad policy bill on New Yorkers and people across our nation. The working and middle-class people in our city and country are already struggling to afford the high cost of living that has only become increasingly more difficult. And yet, Trump and his allies in Congress chose to sell out working families, the very people whose labor makes this country run, to give the richest people in our country tax breaks. The massive cuts to Medicaid mean millions of New Yorkers will lose health insurance. Our hospitals and healthcare systems will be destabilized by billions of dollars in annual cuts. People will be left sick and deprived of life-saving care. Three million New Yorkers rely on federal food assistance through SNAP, and Trump's bill will jeopardize their aid, leaving children and families hungry, all while eliminating revenues for local businesses where SNAP benefits are spent. Let's be clear. Trump's bill is using the federal government to attack working families, states, and cities across this country. It belays, it betrays all of us and what we hold dear. The everyday people who built and sustained this country, the health and safety of our families and neighborhoods and our local economies that facilitate access to opportunity. The people of New York City and this country are bigger than any single president. Trump and his congressional allies, including every Republican member from New York, are accountable for the damage this bill will inflict on New Yorkers and Americans. Our city council will continue to fight to protect all New Yorkers, ensuring that our city is one where all people can thrive because this city belongs to all of us. July is Disability Pride Month, a time when we celebrate the history contributions and experiences of New Yorkers with disabilities. This month commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, historic legislation that promotes inclusivity and accessibility. Our council has prioritized legislation and investments to support New Yorkers with disabilities, and we will continue to strengthen and expand these efforts. There are several other important days that I want to recognize this month. July 1st was Ghana Republic Day. July 9th was Argentina's Independence Day. July 10th was Bahamas' Independence Day. July 20th is Colombia's Independence Day, and July 28th is Peru's Independence Day. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Aho and Oregano's Restaurant, application for a revocable consent to operate a sidewalk cafe in Councilmember Amanda Farias's district. Mayoken House's application for revocable consent to operate a sidewalk cafe in Councilmember Keith Powers' district. 993 through 995 Union Avenue Cluster Amendment, to amend a neighborhood cooperative program cluster to allow one of the buildings to provide rental affordable housing in Councilmember Rafael Salamanca's district. Bally's Ferry Point Amendment, a motion to disapprove LUs 321, 322, and 323 relating to the Bally's Ferry Point map amendment, which would include modifications to the city map, disposition of a city-owned property for an access easement, and rezoning to enable an application for a state gaming facility license to be submitted for consideration in Councilmember Kristi Marmarado's district. Carmen Villegas Apartments, an application for zoning amendment, city acquisition of the development site, designation of an urban development action area, and urban development action area project, and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the development of a 28-story building with 210 affordable senior housing units and ground-floor community facility space in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and require Option 1. Marcus Garvey Boulevard, LSGD, an application for zoning amendment and special permit to modify height and setback requirements to facilitate the development of a new 14-story senior affordable housing building containing 292 units in Councilmember Chio Se's district. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and add Option 3. North 7th Street rezoning, an application for zoning amendment to facilitate the construction of a new six-story mixed-use building with 28 dwelling units, including seven MIH affordable units and ground-floor commercial space in Councilmember Gutierrez's district. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and require Option 1. 145, an application for zoning amendment to facilitate the development of a three-story building complex in Councilmember Salam's district. Following negotiations by the council, it would include approximately 1,000 housing units, including 90 units of affordable senior housing and 338 affordable units total. Community benefits would include the renovation of a neighborhood, of a neighboring playground, a new technology center, commercial and retail space for local businesses, and paid internships for local youth. The council additionally modified the proposal to require MIH Option 1 at one of the three buildings and to reflect revised building heights and programs. The Modulariter Building Apartment Duplexes, designation as an interior landmark in Councilmember Powers' district. This designation includes the third and fourth floors of the Modulariter Building, which was previously designated by the town council as an exterior landmark in 2024. We will also be voting on the following finance item. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one Latin Councilmember Abreu's district. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 926, sponsored by myself, would call for the city of New York to adopt the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a changing climate. Thank you to our staff member Ricky Charla. Resolution 560A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, directs the DOI to conduct an investigation to ascertain the knowledge possessed by mayoral administrations on environmental toxins produced by the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks at the World Trade Center and to submit a report to the council no later than two years after the resolution is adopted. Thank you to our staff members Nicole Kattah, Erica Cohen, Alex Yablón, and Rachel Cordero. Pre-considered result, pre-considered introduction sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan would co-name 128 thoroughfares and public spaces based on requests of council members whose districts include the locations. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Satori, Patrick Mulvaughan, and Michael Sherman. Introduction 1317, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, would waive or partially waive certain reporting requirements, repealing outdated and unnecessary reports. Thank you to our staff members Malcolm Butthorm and Rose Martinez. Introduction 1020A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the DOI to report on any investigations, review, study, or audit related to the NYPD that has been open for more than three years or closed without issuing a report during the previous calendar year. DOI would also report the number of incidents when the NYPD restricted or significantly delayed access to any required information or interfered with the inspector general's duties in closed investigations and investigations that have been open for more than three years. Thank you to our staff members Nicole Kattah, Erica Cohen, Alex Yablón, and Rachel Cordero. Introduction 423A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would establish procedures for the Department of Correction, Correctional Health Services, and the Board of Correction to follow after an individual dies in DOC custody. These include issuing death notifications, conducting investigations, providing updates on misconduct cases related to deaths, and issuing recommendations that help avoid further deaths of people in custody. It would also establish a jail-death review board to examine systemic issues that contribute to deaths in custody. Thank you to our staff members Natalie Melzer, Jeremy Whiteman, and Ralph Calandra, Rob Calandra. Introduction 164A, sponsored by Majority Leader Farias, would require the New York City Economic Development Corporation to prepare and post community impact reports for economic development projects, receiving $4 million or more in city subsidies. These reports, submitted to the mayor and speaker and posted online at least 15 days before final project agreements are executed, would include information on potential resident and business displacement, job creation estimates, housing impacts, and additional analysis of job training opportunities, local investment, and wage impacts for projects in highly distressed areas. Thank you to our staff members Alex Polenoff, William Hunggatch, Rachel Cordero. Introduction 810, also sponsored by Majority Leader Farias, would require the mayor or a designated agency to conduct a feasibility study on using vacant commercial space at NYCHA developments for businesses owned by public housing residents on a temporary basis. The study would need to be completed by July 1st, 2027, and submitted to the council and mayor. Thank you to our staff members Alex Polenoff, William Hunggatch, Rachel Cordero. Introduction 844A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would expand the scope of the NYCHA commercial space feasibility study required by the previous bill by adding an examination of potential grant funding up to $10,000 per business to help NYCHA residents establish, expand, or grow their businesses that would use the vacant commercial space. We thank once again our staff members Alex Polenoff, William Hunggatch, and Rachel Cordero. Introduction 1257A, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would require the Commissioner of the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to identify the 10 most common neurological conditions and 10 most common mental health conditions affecting older adults and report this information to the Commissioner of the Department for the Aging. The DIFTA Commissioner would then issue a report on the provision of city agency services to older adults with these conditions. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Pepe and Chloe Rivera. Introduction 1077A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require ACS to provide luggage to youth entering the foster care system, transitioning between foster homes, or exiting the foster care system. Next, we will vote on a package of bills that represent the fifth segment of the council's mental health roadmap, which focused on vulnerable youth populations. Introduction 1245A, sponsored by myself, would amend the report on foster youth required by Local Law 145 to require that data be disaggregated by age. This bill would also require information to be collected on the council district of each supportive housing building in which foster youth are placed. This bill was inspired by Cheyenne Deoprissade, who I lovingly call my Fair Futures daughter, and who is here with us today. Cheyenne, where is she? Chey... Colleagues, Cheyenne grew up in a foster, in foster care and transitioned into supporting housing as an adult. She is now a policy analyst at Next 100. She is an advocate for improving the foster care system. She's also a student at Columbia University. NYU, NYU. Her insights and policy recommendations were instrumental in shaping this legislation. By improving the quality of data we, we collect, we can better understand when and how young people age out of care and what more we can do to support them in that critical transition. Cheyenne, I am so proud of you over all of these years and everything that you mean to me and our family. I love you. Introduction 1246A, also sponsored by me, would codify the Fair Futures Program into city law. Introduction 1259A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require that all direct service staff employed at juvenile detention facilities who are not professionally certified or licensed in mental health, behavioral analysis, medicine, or a similar field to complete foundational training and behavioral support strategies. We thank our staff members Christina Yalamati and Elizabeth Arts. Next, we'll vote on the Back Home Act, a package of legislation to improve the city's support of New Yorkers displaced from their homes. Resolution 802, sponsored by Councilmember Julie One, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.3886, A.5427, which would require HPD to assist residents displaced by fire with finding a comparable living situation. This state legislation would also require building owners found responsible for a fire that results in a vacate order to cover the costs of a temporary apartment for displaced tenants until building repairs are completed. We thank our staff members Charles Kim, Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Andrew Born. The following bills in this package are all sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez. Resolution 307 would call upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation that limits the duration of time for which a landlord can collect payment from loss of rent's insurance coverage without conducting meaningful repairs to an uninhabitable unit leased by a tenant to three months. an uninhabitable unit leased by a tenant to three months. Thank you to our staff members Josh Kingsley, Rachel Cordero, and William Honggatch. Introduction 750A would require the Department of Buildings to publish a report on the time elapsed to correct violations in certain residential buildings, measuring the number of days between when DOB issued a notice of violation to when DOB accepted the correction and whether the violation remained uncorrected for more than six months. Thank you once again to our staff members Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Andrew Born. Introduction 749A would require the mayor to designate an agency or office to provide centralized support to residents displaced by fire, natural disaster, or other emergency impacting a residential building. The designated entity would be required to serve as a point of contact for displaced residents by responding to inquiries and requests for assistance and by facilitating communication between residents and relevant agencies, and must also attempt to notify such residents as well as the relevant community board and elected officials when a building is determined safe to reoccupy. Thank you again to staff members Andrew Born, Declan McPherson, Austin Malone, Jose Conde, and Dirk Spencer. Introduction 607A sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to relocate tenants who lost their homes due to a fire or other emergency in the same or an immediately adjacent community district upon request. If unavailable, relocation would be required to the nearest community district in the same borough where possible. Thank you to staff members Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Andrew Born. Finally, we will vote on a package of bills that seek to extend protections for all contracted delivery workers, including those delivering food, groceries, or other goods. It covers pay, transparency, and safety standards. I'm proud of this effort to comprehensively address concerns related to delivery app services and workers. Today's effort is yet another step this council is taking to advance a more sustainable delivery sector for our city, which has been a priority of ours and the mayoral administration. Introduction 1135A sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse would require third-party grocery delivery services to pay their delivery workers a minimum pay rate that would meet or exceed that set by DCWP. The agency may adjust the minimum pay rate to the circumstances of grocery delivery workers. Introduction 1133A sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez would extend food delivery worker protection to all contracted delivery workers retained to deliver goods for delivery service. These worker protections would include requirements for providing transparent information, access to bathrooms, distribution of fire safety materials, and insulated delivery bags. This bill would also require DCWP to study working conditions and determine a minimum pay rate for contracted delivery workers. Introduction 859A sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu would require delivery services to pay their contracted delivery workers no later than seven calendar days after the end of a pay period. It would also require the services to provide each worker with an itemized written statement that outlines their compensation and to keep such statements for at least three years, providing copies to workers upon request. Introduction 738A sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu would require third-party food and grocery delivery services to provide the option to tip before or at the same time an order is placed. Introduction 737A also sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu would require third-party food and grocery delivery services to offer a tipping option of at least 10% of the purchase price on each food or grocery delivery order. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cordero, Natalie Melzer, and Sarah Swain. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders and a friendly reminder to my colleagues of two minutes for their remarks, recognizing Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I wanted to start by thanking Malaki McCourt family for being here. His daughter, I believe, is still, Subien is still here, Ray Russell, and the friendly Samay host. I think you have all read Angela's Ashes, written by his brother Frank. But this wonderful Malaki McCourt had a wicked sense of humor. He was an actor, a radio host, a writer, a restaurant owner, candidate for the governor on the Green Party. And when he was in hospice and came home, who but Malaki could run out the hospice, was one of his things he said. So we're delighted that Malaki McCourt Lane will be on the northeast corner of 93rd Street and Weston Avenue. Also, speaking now for Jim Gennaro, who's unable to be here, I want to, we're voting on legislation to co-name a street in honor of Morten, Morty Pavman. He was from Queens, longest-serving member of the city council, and he can, longtime district leader, pillar of the Democratic Party in Queens, and shaped generations of civic life. He was a very, very nice human being. That would be my comment. I don't know if his wife, Sonder, and family members are still here, but if they are, I thank them for joining us. And then I also want to mention, I've got two, a reso, which was mentioned by the speaker, 560A, which talked about 9/11. We've all been trying to get this information, so we have a way of doing it through the charter. We're asking the Department of Investigation to find the material that 20 years ago wasn't available to the public, and let's see if it works. We hope that the DOI can do that, to tell people what actually was or not in terms of what city officials knew. An intro, 1020A also mentioned by the speaker, the NYPD Office of the IG holds the NYPD accountable with investigations, and this will tell us a number of instances when NYPD refused to cooperate with an investigation and the subject, and we look forward to that information. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Rivera.
Ooh, I did it. Good afternoon. Today, we'll be voting on my intro 423, which will require stronger oversight, transparency, and accountability following the death of an individual in the custody of the Department of Correction. I want to thank Speaker Adams for your leadership and support as council continues to address the urgent need for reform in our city's jail system. In this chamber and on city hall steps, many families have stood before us begging for reforms that center humanity and actually provide rehabilitation and support to some of the most vulnerable members of our community. This legislation comes directly from what families and advocates told us they needed: truth, accountability, access to records, and access to their loved ones' personal belongings. We heard from mothers who were denied visits, families who waited weeks for answers, Tamera Carter, who asked for her son Brandon Rodriguez's belongings within a day of his death, only to be told they'd been thrown away. Imagine what that tells a mother about her child's worth. Our jail system is marked by secrecy, dysfunction, violence, and abuse, and 41 people have died in DOC custody since Mayor Adams took office, and too often, people who enter the jail system only come out worse than they went in. And a jail sentence should not be a death sentence. In May 2023, the Department of Correction Commissioner stated they would stop telling the public when someone dies in their custody, and this legislation is a direct response to that announcement, as well as to the painful stories shared by families who lost loved ones in jail custody. This law puts clear rules in place. Accountability isn't a choice. It's a basic duty for this agency with so many New Yorkers in its care, and when there is no transparency, there is no trust. Amid continued brutality and neglect, this council is stepping up to demand accountability in action, and New Yorkers deserve nothing less. I'd like to thank colleagues from Freedom Agenda and Urban Justice Center for their collaboration in crafting this legislation, as well as the impacted families and advocates who have turned their pain into meaningful change, and thank you to committee staff, Rob, Natalie, Jeremy, and of course, Eddie Amador on my team. I urge my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. In 2021, the city council did something very important. It passed legislation to guarantee minimum pay for food delivery workers, and that was a big deal. Over $1 billion in additional wages have gone into the pockets of working people, but we left out grocery delivery workers. These workers do similar work with similar risks and are subject to similar exploitation by the apps, and many are paid poverty wages. Intro 1135 corrects this pay disparity. It ensures that grocery delivery workers, many of whom are supporting families, are paid the same $21.44 minimum wage as food delivery workers. This is about basic fairness. Last week, a lot of misinformation was put out by the apps, and these messages have been false and harmful. The fact is, third-party delivery apps have built multimillion-dollar business models that profit precisely because they have very little obligation to their workers. And it's my belief that any company that can't survive while paying workers a living wage is not a successful model. Whether this is your primary gig or you're picking up hours on the side, I believe your time matters, your labor has worth, and you deserve dignity. These apps didn't just change how we get our groceries, they have changed the labor market, and workers across the industry are organizing, and that's why this bill matters. I just want to thank Ryan Hickey from my team, my colleague, Councilmember Jen Gutierrez, and her team, Jeff Baker, Speaker Adams, and most importantly, I want to thank all the delivery workers who have organized and fought for fairness. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Intro 1077 is personal. It's about honoring the humanity of children who are too often have been left to feel disposable in a system that's supposed to protect them. Far too many of our foster youth are forced to carry their lives in trash bags, items that are meant for waste, not for memories. That practice sends a clear and harmful message, that their lives, their stories, and their belongings does not matter, and that is unacceptable. With the passage of this legislation, we are saying loud and clear: our foster youth matter, their dignities matter, their life experiences matter, and the City of New York sees them. Intro 1077 is about more than luggage, it's about legacy. It's about building a city that cares enough to do better for our most vulnerable, and it's a reminder that even the seemingly small things, like a suitcase, can carry enormous weight. I want to thank Speaker Adams for her unwavering support and for championing this cause with compassion and urgency it deserves. Speaker Adams, your leadership has helped turn this moment into a movement. I also like to thank Centers for Fair Futures, Children's Village, Next 100, Cheyenne, Sophie, this is for you, for Ricky, for Ryan, for Christopher, Heart Share St. Vincent, Good River Partners for their work in making this legislation a reality. With this step forward, but it's not the end, we must continue to reimagine a foster care system rooted in love, stability, and dignity, because every child, every single one, deserves more than survival. They deserve to thrive. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I want to take a moment to speak on behalf of the co-naming package we're voting on today. It's a true honor to help co-name several streets in my district in memory of individuals who didn't just talk the talk, they walked the walk. They were people who gave their all to their communities and left a lasting impact. First, I want to recognize the Henry family, who is here today to represent a young leader, former classmate, and dear friend. Her life was tragically cut short, but in her spirit remains with us. From the day I took office, I knew I wanted to honor her memory, and Alabama Avenue between Riverdale-Lavonia will now carry her name forever. Steph was destined to do even more incredible things in this world than she already had in her short time with us. I love you, we miss you, and we hope we've made you proud. I also wanted to recognize the fact that we'll be doing a street naming for the Fat Boys, a musical legends, hip-hop pioneers, born and raised in East New York. Skank Avenue is where their journey began, and to co-name it in their honor is a dream come true. Their contributions helped shape the global culture, and now their legacy will live on right here where it all started. Also, too, another great pioneer, Annabelle Diaz-Austin, a powerful voice in Boulevard Houses, a dear friend. Annabelle was a light to our community, attended every meeting, every event, always focused on how she could make life better for our community, especially for our young folks. Her passing shook our district, but her legacy continues. She was an embodiment of what it means to serve. Also, too, wanted to recognize Francine Cutler, who's also here to represent the family, and also Mary Fran Wilson and John Curley, our beloved pillars of Brookline Houses. We look forward to honoring them and memorializing their names on the streets in 42nd Council District. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Marmarado.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I speak on behalf of District 13. Over the past several months, I've sat down with all sides, my constituents, the Bally's applicant, and many of you in this chamber. I've listened, I've gave everyone the opportunity to speak, to present, and to be heard, and while I kept my door open, the application came in to the table a little too late, with promises too vague, with an already process too flawed to rebuild the trust that was already lost in our community. This is not real economic development. This is not housing, a hospital, or community improvements. It's a casino, and we all know what casinos bring: no sustainable growth. And to the people of District 13, I see you, I hear you, and always going to stand with you, and we may not win every battle, but I will fight with you to the end. Colleagues, I ask you to vote yes to disapprove this application and the proposal, not just because I oppose it, but because the community I represent opposes it. It's about how we value one another's districts, it's about how we uphold and listen to each other's leaderships, and we protect the people that we are elected to serve. I ask you to vote yes to disapprove, and I thank you very much for your time.
Recognizing Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm speaking up against the call-out to disapprove LU 321, 322, and 323. As a Bronx kid who is raising his family in the borough, I am deeply concerned that today we will fail to allow the Bronx to tap into the potential economic development opportunities that would allow a gaming application to move forward in the process. Once again, the Bronx is being left behind. Unfortunately, the Bronx is first at bad statistics and last in good statistics. We have the worst health outcomes of all 62 counties in New York. We have some of the highest unemployment and underemployment and lowest median income in New York City. This application is not just about Bally's, but the economic development of the entire borough of the Bronx. It's unfortunate that when opportunities such as much-needed union construction and permanent jobs for people that need them come to the Bronx, we shoot ourselves in the foot and deny ourselves these opportunities. This application we're voting on today will not grant Bally's a gaming license. The state will choose who to award the license, but today's yes vote to disapprove will not allow the process to continue and deny the unhealthiest and poorest borough an opportunity to grow its economy and provide jobs. By voting against this application, we're voting no to hundreds of millions of dollars in economic development and historic community benefits, which will bring robust community investments to all the residents of the entire borough of the Bronx. Give the Bronx an opportunity to grow. Please, vote no to disapprove applications LU 321, 322, and 323. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, we are voting on several items that make this a full-circle moment. I entered office with a vision to empower my community while providing equity and inclusion. My mandate is to prioritize the approval of developments that include affordability for our current residents and to provide opportunity and empowerment and advancement for them as well. 145 is more than just a construction project, it is in fact a community revival. Make no mistake, this wasn't easy. It took persistence, partnership, and the power of people. I want to thank our Speaker Adrian Adams, my fellow councilmembers on the land use and zoning committees, City Council's Planning and Land Use Division, Community Board 10, local housing advocates, Dr. Malcolm Punter from HCCI, Womber Brown, my chief of staff, and the rest of my dedicated staff, both past and present, who are in the room. We went back to the table again and again until we got a deal that reflects the values and the needs of Harlem. Additionally, I'm honored to sponsor the co-naming of two important plazas in my district. The Bill Perkins Plaza, named after my mentor, champion, and friend, is a bittersweet moment. Honorable Bill Perkins exemplified what it means to have a seat at the table and to make sure that you were not on the menu. He was his own man and made bold moves such as being the first elected official in New York to endorse the then-Senator Barack Obama for president. This is Bill's home, and now he will have a plaza forever reminding people of his impact on making this city reminding people of his impact on making this city great by fiercely defending and protecting the rights of all of its citizens. And finally, Malcolm X Plaza, named in recognition of my hero and our international treasure, is an extension of Perkins' legacy. He was one of the first to champion this initiative, and I'm glad the baton has been passed to me to take it over the finish line. These are victories for Harlem. Let's celebrate together. Thanks.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. Too often, the well-being of our older adult population is overlooked. It is upsetting, though not surprising, that older adults have higher rates of late onset mental health disorders while simultaneously struggling with low rates of identification and treatment. Intro 1257 works to solve this by requiring the city to study how agencies serve older adults with common neurological and mental health conditions and find a way to ensure those who need them receive these supports. This will begin to chip away at the inadequate resources and stigma that keep older adults struggling in silence. And I'd also like to speak quickly about a co-naming in my district that we're voting on today, which will be of significant importance to the Speaker and Majority Leader. Juanita Marjorie Jackson, a renowned Brooklyn composer and educator, wrote Dear AKA, the official hymn of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and founded a thriving music studio in Crown Heights while actively engaging in local politics and public service. A graduate of Juilliard and Northwestern, she also worked on historic campaigns for Bertram Baker and Representative Edna F. Kelly. I'd like to thank Lucian Thompson and Don Baskerville for their dedication and work to secure this co-naming. And lastly, Councilmember Gutierrez would like to thank everyone for voting on her two bills today. Back home and delivery workers, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles.
Hello, everyone. Today, I just want to take a moment to several important figures from the 38th community who are being honored with the street naming. First, we honor James J. McKnight, a cherished husband, father, grandfather, friend, and neighbor. He was born and raised in Brooklyn. His voice graced the airwaves from the 1950s to the 80s during the time of musical act the Dubs, the Norman Fox, and the Rob Boys, to name a few. With the love of his life Andrea McKnight by his side, beyond the stage, he led a life of community service as a member of the Red Hook Lions Club, co-president of the Red Hook Civic Association, under so many other roles. And for 15 years, he brought concerts to Coffee Park and contributed to the vibrancy of our community. We're also honoring the life of Padre Ruskin Piedra, a devoted member of the congregation of the Most Holy Redeemer and part of the missionary that served Our Lady of Perpetual Health in Sunset Park. Padre Piedra was beloved by the community for his service which spanned more than 27 years and for the co-founding of the Juan Newman Center. We're also recognizing the contributions of Rosa Pacela, who is an active member of her local policing council, linking the community, and both her role at the NIA Community Service, where she worked for 25 years as a community member. She spent her life advocating for our district's children's needs. And lastly, we recognize Blaste Jesús Gonzales, a Dominican immigrant who came to the U.S. to make a better life for his family, opening Los Compadres grocery store in Sunset Park. He's not only accomplished his dream, but he helped to employ community members, and he served his community so well and with so much love. And thank you for honoring the legacy of these beloved community members. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, as I almost there, y'all. Report of special committees?
None.
Report of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Aging, Intro 1257A, Services for Older Adults.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Children and Youth, Intros 1077A, 1245A, and 1246A, Foster Care.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1259A, Juvenile Detention Facilities.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intros 737A through 1135A, Delivery Workers.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intros 423A, Deaths in DOC Custody.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Economic Development, Intro 164A, City Subsidized Development Projects.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros 810A and 844A, Public Housing Authority Commercial Spaces.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered LU 328 and Reso 992 Tax Exemption.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intro 1317A, Report and Advisory Board Review Commission.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 607A and 749A, Tenant Relocation and Resident Displacement Services.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 750A, Building Demolitions.
amended and coupled on general orders.
LU 321 and Reso 993 through LU 323 and Reso 995, Bally's Ferry Point Map Amendment.
Discharge Pursuant to Rule 1160 and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 326 and Reso 996, Myconian House.
coupled on general orders.
LU 327 and Reso 997, Sidewalk Cafe.
approved with modifications and coupled on general orders.
LU 329 and Reso 998, Landmark Designation.
coupled on general orders.
LU 330 and Reso 999, Union Avenue Cluster Amendment.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Oversight and Investigations, Intro 1020A, Police Department Investigations.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 1833, Naming of 128 Thoroughfares and Public Places.
coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 294 and Reso 1,000 through LU 316 and Reso 1011, Various Applications from City Planning.
coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala. Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye on all except LU 321, 322, and 323.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr. Delarosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all except for 321, 322, 323.
Felder.
Aye on all, except no on Intro 1020A, and I abstain on Intro 1338. And I'd like to explain my vote.
Permission granted.
You know what? I pass.
Thank you, Councilmember Felder.
You all owe me. I had nothing to say. I just figured, you're going to remember this one.
Felice. Councilmember Felice.
She's afraid to say anything.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif. Hank.
Aye.
About 4,000 intersections. Traffic light.
Aye.
Councilmember Felice votes aye. Holden.
Aye on all except for Intro 1020A, 1133A, 1135A, 423A, 737A, and 738A, which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Kidding, kidding, kidding. Aye.
Next time, I'm going to deny that.
Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Lewis.
Aye on all, and I'll abstain on LU 321, 322, and 323.
Mar Marado.
I vote aye on all with the exception of 737, 1020A, 1258, 1133A, 1135A, and 423A. I vote no.
Marte. Mealy.
I vote no on 133A, 102A, LU 321, 322, 323, and I on all the rest.
Councilmember Mealy, could you repeat the first two noes, please?
No on 133A, 102A, and LU 321, 322, and 323.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Menon.
I vote aye on all, except I'm abstaining on land use items 321, 322, and 323.
Moreno.
I vote aye on all with the exception of 737, 738, 1020A, 1133A, and 1135A, on which I vote no.
Moya. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
First, I appreciate Madam Speaker, yes, for the leadership. And second, I'm a nurse that remind me that I came here to care and to make sure that I struck a balance in everything that I do. And most important, that was a joke, but it's a good joke. And I want to say
Councilmember, please explain your votes.
And I want to say for Manjro's Christian that's watching right now for her son that passed, and she been fighting and saying that it is important to remember the lives of her son. She gave a lot of, I mean, she gave a lot of time, and he gave a lot of time to serve the community together. And for that, I want to say that the street co-naming is meaningful to me. It actually recognize those that really give their time and their services to their community. So I want to say for Justice Cy Keswe and James Buchanan and Rabbi Dr. David Halpern, that we, the family, since we tight on time, I'm going to say acknowledge them, and I want to say thank you for everything. And I have to say aye on everything except I'm abstain on 321, 322, 323, and accompanying Reso, and I'm abstain on 1135. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Councilmember Felice. Councilmember Felice, please.
I would like to change my vote to aye on all, except 321, 322, 323.
Thank you. Palladino.
Sorry. I vote aye on all except for Intro 737, 738, 1020A, 1133A, 135A, and 423A.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
I want to vote aye on all with the exception of Intro 321, 322, and 323, which I am no, and accompanying Resos. Thank you.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Vote aye.
Salamanca.
Yes, I vote aye on all except LU 321, 322, and 323.
Sanchez.
I vote aye.
Shalmin.
Aye.
Stevens.
I vote aye on all except 321, 322, 323.
Um. Vernikoff. Williams.
I vote aye on all except no on land use item 321, 322, and 323.
One.
I vote aye on all, but I abstain from LU 321, 322, 323, and all the accompanying Resos.
Shuang.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye on all with the exception of Intros 737, 738, 1020A, 1133A, 1135A, and 423A, for which I am a no.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Amending that I vote aye on all with the exception of 321, 322, and 323, on which I abstain.
Farias.
I vote aye on all with the exception of land use items 321, 322, and 323, in which I vote no.
Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
Okay, folks. All items on today's General Order Calendar are adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of LU 321, 322, and 323, which was adopted by a vote of 29 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and 4 abstentions, and Introduction 737A and 738A, which were adopted by a vote of 37 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 423A, which was adopted by a vote of 38 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 1020A, which was adopted by a vote of 35 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 1133A, which was adopted by a vote of 35 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and 1 abstention, and Introduction 1135A, which was adopted by a vote of 36 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, and 2 abstentions. Introduction and Reading of Bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you, we will now move into the discussion of resolutions. Seeing no one signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote, just wanna make sure I saw no hands, right? Okay. We will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 307 calls on the New York State Legislature, folks, on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation that limits the duration of time for which a landlord can collect payment from loss of rents, insurance coverage without legislation that limits the duration of time for which a landlord can collect payment of loss of rents, insurance, coverage without conducting meaningful repairs to an uninhabitable unit leased by a tenant to three months. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 560A directs the Department of Investigation to conduct an investigation to ascertain the knowledge possessed by mayoral administrations on environmental toxins produced by the September 11, 2001 terrorist attacks on the World Trade Center, and to submit a report to the Council thereon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 802 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Senate Bill 3886 and Assembly Bill 5427 in relation to protecting tenants displaced due to fire. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 926 declares that the City of New York, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to the changing climate, adopts the New York State Climate Smart Communities Pledge. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 933 approves the report and Advisory Board Review Commission's determination recommending waiver or partial waivers of six reporting requirements that was communicated to the City Council on December 23, 2024. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to call on Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much, just two quick things. One is Intro 1333, which is pedicabs in Central Park. The suggestion is to restrict pedicabs from operating in the park except under the terms of a concession agreement with the Parks Department. This is controversial, but the idea is how are we gonna get the good actors who are doing a good job and get rid of the illicit pedicabs as discussed in the newspapers today? Intro 1334 is also controversial. This is one that I actually voted differently in 2012. This says we would repeal Local Law 20 of 2012, which was sponsored by our friend David Greenfield. It ended then, then we wanted to get rid of fixing adhesive stickers to windows of cars that obstruct street sweepers on alternative side parking days. We got rid of it. I want to put those stickers back because I cannot get the cars to move. They find it's cheaper to pay the ticket than the garage, and they keep blocking all of the street sweepers. The Acting Commissioner of Sanitation said that it was the only way to get people to move their car, so I wanna suggest that we vote for that bill in the future, and I also just wanna thank all my interns who are here today, and also wanna thank regarding the resolution on 9/11, Ben Chavat from the 9/11 Health Watch. I also wanna thank Sam Goldsmith from my office, and then all the many people that the Speaker mentioned when she talked, from the ONI Division, the Division of Legislative Drafting, and obviously from the ONI Committee staff. Thank you very much.
I'll now, seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of July 14, 2025 is hereby adjourned.